You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, our service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford.
All right, I have 601, we'll get started. Call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for April 21st, 2021 to order. Just remind everybody that this is a remote meeting under the Governor's executive order. Just remind everybody that they do need to announce their name prior to speaking. For those who would like to speak, use the raise your hand function, or if you're calling in, hit star nine, star nine, and that'll show that you'd like to speak. When recognized, you can unmute yourself. If you're calling in, hit star six to unmute yourself. All right, with that said, we'll get moving. Item one, actually, you know what? Before we start, I just feel I'd rather do it now than at the end of the meeting. Just like to, as we all know, our community experienced an event last week that really shook our community and is, you know, oftentimes you think it can't happen in a town like Branford with the barricaded event and shooting. I just want to acknowledge and to thank the those who responded, the Branford Police Department. I think it was through their professionalism, through their dedication to service, their commitment to protect the community they serve, that the bad situation didn't become much worse. So I want to thank them, acknowledge them, and the other agencies that responded. And even for the, you know, not to miss our own Branford Fire Department and EMTs that responded to the one victim. And certainly our thoughts and wishes, wish the best to the one victim for a full recovery. And also just keep in mind that, you know, where we as a community may be getting through this, that there were some residents who were directly impacted. And, you know, we got to think of them and give them, you know, keep them in our thoughts as well. So I just thought it was important to acknowledge that tonight before we began the meeting. Item one, to approve the Board of Selectmen minutes from April 7th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, seconded by Selectman Dunbar. Any edits, changes, corrections? Hearing on all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, extensions, pass to the answer. Item two, can I get a motion to go into Executive Session to discuss pending tax appeals? And we'll invite in Attorney Perito.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, seconded by Selectman Dunbar. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I get a motion to go back into regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, seconded by Selectman Dunbar. We're now back in regular session. For the record, no votes were taken while in the Executive Session. All right, can I get a motion to approve the proposed tax settlement for 133 Johnson Point Road and 111 Johnson Point Road?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by, moved by Selectwoman Higgins, seconded by Selectman Dunbar. Any discussion? Hearing on all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, extensions, pass to the answer.
Excuse me, Jim.
Yes, go ahead.
Can you, I can't get video. It says that I'm being prevented by the host. You don't want to look at me tonight?
Me too, but I was okay.
Oh, you too, huh?
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Try, can you do it now?
Nope. Let's try again.
I made it.
Yeah, try it out.
Come on, come on.
There you go.
Hey.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the proposed tax settlement for 133 Linden Avenue?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, seconded by Selectman Dunbar. Any discussion? Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, extensions, pass to the answer. Item three, to consider and appropriate, thank you Jim for hearing that. Item three, to consider and appropriate approval request from Alex Peluzzi, Director of Parks and Recreation, to waive the bid for field renovations and maintenance for the 2021, '22 and 2022, '23 fiscal years and award the contract to Sherwood Landscaping LLC. I know the Selectman did receive a letter and some backup information regarding this item. I believe Alex Peluzzi, Director of Parks and Rec is on. Alex, would you like to go through this?
Yes, I just want to highlight, thank you for your consideration. I did send a letter out to each of the Board of Selectmen members and moving forward. And in my letter, I'm just going to highlight a couple of topics. And one is that Sherwood Landscaping LLC has been doing work for the town for the past 25 years. Going back a few years back, we went out, we asked for a bid waiver because we had some other projects that were going on. And in this past year, talking to Catherine Labanca, I put in a PO for this, for the spring, to usually do spring work because they're usually calculated out. I did one last year on July 1st for $9,000 for all the work that would be done in late spring and the summer. And then I also did one for the fall on November 30th for another $9,000, which kind of got us over the threshold of what we do with contracts. So coming into, into the spring, I put one in and we caught and said, look, you know, we've got to try to, you know, look forward to kind of finish out the year this year, 2021, 2020, 2021, and then for 2021 and 22, that, you know, to move forward. So obviously finance, I didn't move on the PO because I wanted to come in front of the Board of Selectmen to ask to move pricing. So I was also asked to get some prices on what we spent in the last three years, which I outlined to each of the Selectmen. It averaged about a little over $21,000 for the last three years. And then on top of that, you know, we had a very dry season, if you remember, all of last year, not only through late spring and the summer, but into the fall. And even in the winter, it wasn't, you know, we didn't have that much rain. And we had damage from the storms. Last year, we had those two storms, especially on Slaney till renovation. So it's really hard to put together on what work we have to get done. Sherwood Landscaping has been, I mentioned, 25 years. We do, it's really based on science. In your packet, you can read just an example of his narrative of what he's done for his work and the communities and surrounding communities. And question was that, you know, is he staying within his price range? And I kind of identify that when he does a fertilization program, it's between $100 to $350 on organic fertilizing, depending on the acreage and the product that we're putting down. Then also basically, if he does a renovation on a field, whether it's a Little League field or there, it's, for every quarter date, it's about $250 for the labor and equipment. So again, you know, we've been honored by the Governor of the state of Connecticut over the years, as well as the Watershed Partnership, the Connecticut Agricultural Station, many other agencies in the state of Connecticut, as well as nationally, for a work of organic care on our fields, parks, greens, and facilities to incorporate this program. And some of the surrounding communities include Cheshire, Madison, Wallingford, Old Sabre, Coggin, Chog, Deep River, and had him in Killingworth. I mean, he's very tough to get, we've had him. And so when we looked at pricing, I kind of went on the, they had an RFP that the Board of Education in Madison did, which I have in the packet. And the numbers were consistent. Actually, they were a little bit longer for one of the vendors, and the other one was pretty much close. But again, they went with Sherwood Landscaping because of the work and the results that he get. And, you know, if you go back in the history that I've been director here, I've come in front of the Board of Finance then to say that, you know, we've worked really hard. We work with Dr. Jerry Silber, the Watershed Partnership, with Chuck, with myself. He's out of the University of Connecticut. And we just had a community just come down to take a look at our fields and how they were. We've had people come from, all the way from Chicago to Yale University to look at our fields. And before the rain, as Jim Perito mentioned, we, the fields were flourishing before the rain. We haven't had much rain this season so far, but it's just because of the work that we does. And basically, if you look at the pricing for that, he's very consistent, he's either lower or, you know, and it's good to look out there. But again, we wanted to finish this year because of what we had. I haven't started the work that I want to do right now because I had to come in front of you to make sure that we obviously do this in the right fashion. And I also, hopefully, we could do it for this next fiscal year. And the next spring, I'll come back and I'll actually probably come back with an RFP for that work. So when I put the POs and I didn't put them in for the threshold, it was back in July, then one was in late September, and now I'm trying to get one into, into the spring right now. So that's, that's, and I just said, we've worked very hard on getting that. And it's, you know, I know Sullivan, there's many vendors that can do it, but we did go look into just a recent request for proposal from the town of Madison, from the Board of Education on their fields. And it was very consistent, if you look at the numbers.
Alex, just to clear, you actually need to waive bid for this current fiscal year? So that would be the 2021 fiscal year? And then the 21, '20, you're looking for the 21, '22 fiscal year?
To stay consistent, because, you know, one season goes into the other, and now we're going to be going in this late spring into, you know, early summer. And then it's a new fiscal year. And we already got the program pretty much in place.
Yep. Not to cut you off, I just want to, when we go to make a motion, I just want to correct the agenda that the, if we act on it, it should be the renovations and maintenance for the 2020-2021 fiscal year? Because it's this current fiscal year you need a waiver. And you're looking for next fiscal year, 21-22 fiscal year.
Yeah.
Correct? Okay. Actually, why don't we just get that motion right now and correct the agenda if we don't mind?
I'll make a motion to make the change.
All right.
Second.
Moved, seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, extensions. I see your hand up, Mr. Cook. Once we open it up for discussion, I'll call on you. All right. So just to summarize it, longstanding relationship with this contractor, although each application to each field does not exceed the bid threshold, but given over a current, over an entire fiscal year, the amount of work throughout town, various fields, would exceed the 12.5. And since it's all similar work, the prudent thing was to ask for a bid waiver. A recent RFP by a neighboring town verifies that we're paying a fair, a fair rate, a comparable rate to what other towns that just went through an RFP process and solicited multiple persons, correct?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion, comments? All right.
I'll move it.
Okay, it's been moved.
Second.
Seconded by Selectwoman Higgins, Mr. Cook.
A quick question. I actually had a question for Mr. Perito, and I wasn't recognized with my hand up. So you could be a little more careful about the hand going up, since those are the rules. What I have a question for in a general sense is, the rec director mentioned that there were a number of firms out there that could do this. Now, he's opted not to go with them for whatever reason. But let me just ask, if I were the owners of one of those firms, would I feel put upon that I didn't have an opportunity?
Is it to the board or to the director?
Well, we can start with the director.
Can you repeat the question? I'm sorry, again, he said a.
Yeah, I mean, you mentioned that a number, and this is not just you, Alex. I mean, I've seen, we've all seen many waived proposals come before this board. Now, I guess what I'm saying is, we have a bid process for a reason. You mentioned that there were a number of firms out there that could do this, but you opted not to go with them for a couple of your own reasons, which I'm sure makes sense. But I guess what I'm asking is, if I owned one of those other firms, would I feel put upon that I wasn't given an opportunity?
Yeah, I mean, any, you know, just to give you an example, we had, going back, I'm going to say 2008, we had 108 bids for our landscape services, which we actually have out currently now. We have three-year contracts on them. And the low bidders won the, you know, after we vetted through that process, the first three vendors never showed up for work because they out, they 100 bid everyone else. And we had to completely change the process and go back. So we got local, we went out to bid back in 2017 for all these because it was a lot of different grass cutting. But this is, this is an organic approach that we were one of the leaders, Wayne, going back into the 90s. We were the first, it was ourselves. Guilford got involved just on the green in Cheshire. So we were really the pioneers of this program to move forward. And it's really hard to, you know, he's been very loyal to our town to stay here with the town. And I can remember back in Little League a few years back, we had another contractor that, you know, there's plenty of similar people that can come and do it. I don't know if they can do the extensive work that he does or have the knowledge. You know, we, we, every single field we go on, we do a soil sample, so we know exactly what's in that. You know, we started the organic process back with using residence leaves up at the transfer station. So we did that to try to kind of balance it out. So yeah, I mean, there's, I could get 108 different bids on that. But I, you know, and I know a couple of times when they came in, number one, they didn't show up. And then for, you know, for a month or so, so we were chasing it. So.
Yeah, but you kind of, to be honest with you, Alex, you're kind of mixing the stories there. One's about, you know, the field work, and one's about the grass and all that. I guess what I'm asking is, if you gain a relationship with a vendor over the course of 20, 25 years, and you feel that they've been treating you well and, you know, loyal and all this, what opportunity is there for anyone to ever break in? And I'm not just picking on you because, frankly, we see this all the time. And there's many times I ask myself, why do we even have a bid process many times? Because it's not being utilized.
Well, it is, it is being utilized. It wasn't used, it wasn't utilized on this disvendor, you know.
You know what I'm saying? In this case, it's not. In many other departments, it's not. I think it's a fair question. You know, I mean, I don't know where it's written in the bid process. I'm not, you know, an expert on it that, you know, it's at the discretion of the department head, whether or not, you know, they really put it out to a true bid. And if that's the case, well, what are the reasons for?
And we've, we've all said other work too, on whether it's a state contract. And sometimes you don't, you don't always get the best price in the state contract, but.
I know, I'm not saying what you're doing is wrong. I'm just saying that I've always been trying to champion of the process. I don't think anyone's going to argue that. So what's the process by which another vendor is going to feel treated fairly? And again, it's not picking on you. I mean, I've seen, right, I mean, we've all seen 20, 25 different people can then do the same thing. I just don't understand it.
Yeah, I guess I would just add to that comment. Thank you for your comment, question. Where I certainly understand your point you're making, but I think it's also important to point out that what we're doing tonight is actually, per our ordinance, part of the process. So we are following, to your point, I think there are times that do, certainly, certain projects and services, it's in the best interest to go out to bid or an RFP process. There's other times where I think, you know, in this situation where you may have a proven vendor and you verify that you're paying a fair, fair rate. So I think that is, again, in the best interest. And the argument he's making is the best interest of the department and the town to continue on with this, this particular vendor. And sometimes that situation exists in other areas as well. So thank you for the comment.
Well, one quick follow-up, and I'll make this quick because I don't want to spend all night on this. But if you're a vendor out there and you have a better product than the one that the director is using now and it's cheaper, but he's staying with the one he has because he's loyal to them and they've been good to him in the past, how is that really capitalism at its best? Because you're not giving the best product an opportunity that you should be to enter the market. I think that's a fair question. Whether it applies in this specific case, we can go on about that. I think it's a fair question. And I think at some point, the bid process needs to be refined. Because I've come here too many times and see that there's a lot of, it's a lot of wiggle room here. And I don't think there necessarily should be to be fair to people who are trying to make a fair living.
All right, thank you. All right, we have been moved, seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, extensions, passing the answer. Thank you. Item four, to consider and appropriate approval request from Debbie Murdaugh, Director of Information Technology, to waive the bid for advertising the sale of a 2014 data card printer, trade-in value of $1,400, and allow her to trade it in toward the purchase of a new smart 51D duplex card printer.
Starting at $49.
Debbie?
All access membership separate.
Yes, yes, on the air, yes. So we have a seven, eight-year-old printer over at the police department that we use to print ID cards and access badges. And this printer is already several years end of life. We can't get support on it, and we're having a lot of issues with it. So I contacted our vendor who we bought it from, and he's willing to let me upgrade to get a new printer, which is $2,990. And if I trade in, instead of doing our regular process of sending this out to the transfer station and advertise it for sale, the street value of this printer is $480. But the vendor who I deal with will allow me to trade the sales for $1,400 credit towards a new printer. So instead of the new printer being $2,990, we'll be paying $1,590.
Okay, great. You have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, seconded by Selectman Dunbar. Any further discussion? Straight forward, thank you Debbie. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Thank you.
Extensions, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five, to consider and appropriate approval of the following resolution, Affordable Housing Planning Grant. Authorizes submission of the town of Branford Affordable Housing Planning Grant application in accordance with the planning grants for thriving Connecticut communities, Affordable Housing Plan Technical Assistance Program. Request for applications. Authorizes the individual serving as First Selectmen or their successors, successors, to sign the grant application and to sign any other documents associated with administering the grant, if awarded, including any amendments there too. Authorizes the individual serving as the town planner or their successors to administer the grant program on behalf of the town of Branford. We do have Town Planner Harry Smith. If there's anybody questions for this, I believe we've actually had a couple resolutions come forward this body regarding this when we applied. And we are awarded $15,000, correct, Harry?
Yeah, Harry Smith, Town Planner, that's correct. The purpose for this resolution is to allow the First Selectmen to sign a notice of grant award and amended one that would grant the town an extension of time to complete the Affordable Housing Plan and the work under the grant. Right now, the grant is slated to expire in the end of June. This would give us an extra six months. One of the purposes of doing that is to better coordinate with a effort being undertaken by the Council of Governments based in New Haven, which is looking at doing a regional affordable housing plan. So I think it's, will give us the ability to string this out a little bit and provide that coordination and hopefully do a little more in-depth and timely job on our own affordable housing plan.
Can you get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Dunbar, seconded by Selectwoman Higgins. Any discussion by the board, questions?
I do. I'm not quite sure if I understand this. Is this mandated by the courts, Harry? Is this part of that decision that the judge made recently regarding?
No.
Is this something separate?
No, it's something separate, but it is a mandated plan. The new state law requires the town to have one in place by, I believe it's the end of June or some date in 2022. So there is a requirement to do the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, Mr. Cook.
Yes, I'm just a little confused by something. I'm not quite sure exactly what this does in terms of affordable housing, but I was surprised at the last meeting, and I'm trying to tie this in with what this particular proposition does or proposal does with the First Selectmen's, well, what I consider to be, I think others did too, sort of flip-flop, you know, decision on affordable housing at Parkside. I mean, quite frankly, for five, six years longer, I mean, you really didn't care too much about what was going on down there. And then all of a sudden, the fact that they were putting in higher-end units and probably displacing seniors, you know, in the process, became a real concern to you. So how does this particular proposal or proposition or whatever it is called factor into a town's policy when, as we saw last week, the town's policy doesn't seem to really be in any sort of consistent existence? Because you did go very surprising to people, you know, you had a very strong position for five or six years, and then all of a sudden, it went just the opposite on affordable housing. So do we have a position on affordable housing that you can rely on? Or is it just something that's the win of the First Selectmen or the P&amp;Z or anybody else?
Well, Harry Smith, Town Planner, I take a stab at this, Mr. First Selectmen, if you'd like me to. If I understand the question correctly, you're wondering about the last decision by the Planning and Zoning Commission to, um, amend the resolution of approval, um, at the direction of the court. Um, so that if that's what you're referring to, that change in direction, that was?
No, that's, that's not it, Harry. I, I, I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt, but I was referring to the first selectmen's kind of flip-flop.
Yeah, okay. I apologize then.
So a, as Harry said, that Harry could speak to the planning grant and as stated, this is required, uh, by under state statute and, uh, for every municipality to create a plan. Uh, and as our COG is also doing, creating, uh, going through an effort as well. So as you stated, uh, we're asking for an extension and we're going to coordinate and align ourselves with that regional effort. So that's the grant. Your comment about flip-flopping, you clearly have not been, uh, engaged in this matter. I have been engaged in affordable housing. I voiced my concerns. I've attended many workshops through the Council of Governments. Uh, um, the concerns that I expressed, uh, at last meeting, quite honestly, were expressed, um, uh, several ti- times over the years, uh, to, to individuals directly involved as well as, quite honestly, um, publicly, uh, to members of the press. So whether those choose to, um, uh, to listen to what I said or, or were part engaged at the time and now engaged, I can assure you there was no, uh, flip-flopping. My concerns that I voiced last meeting were consistent with my concerns, uh, throughout this process uh, for the project that you are referring to. And quite honestly, that is documented.
Well, you know, with all respect, you surprised a lot of people last week, given that that was the case. Because the consensus was that among people that I, you know, associate with, that are very familiar with that project, was that you were not firm in your position on what was going on on that Parkside project. That, you know, it was really understood that the seniors would be left as is. And then it was only in the last minute, for whatever reason of your own, that you expressed concern that those seniors might be displaced because we're putting in larger, and again, the key word here, affordable housing units. Now, I'm not going to be an expert on this because you know I have my hands in a lot of other issues around town. But from my understanding, that was a change on your part. In terms of at least, in terms of at least the degree of your concern, you might have said something in passing, but then all of a sudden, now that this was coming to a head, you were saying, we got to be really careful about those seniors because we got bigger units coming in there and that's going to push them out maybe. Well, people say, well, where did that come from? It's good to hear him say it, but where did that come from? And that's why I'm circling back to, do we even have an affordable housing plan?
Yeah, no, we're going to create one, but I will just say in response, and we don't, we don't go back and forth. I think there's another resident like to speak. So last comment, I'd be happy to discuss it with you further. Feel free to contact me anytime and I can show you. Going back to even before, back in the very beginning, uh, I had expressed concerns over the seniors. Now, again, that was documented in, in letters and emails to the state. Uh, that was doc, you know, the conversations I had with state, uh, Senator at the time. Um, uh, the, the, my concern of going from what we have now to a tiered system, uh, we expressed that, uh, to representatives of the, the resident organization within, uh, the, the, uh, development. Um, so once again, I would be happy to discuss with you further, but at this time I just want to open up, I have another hand up. So thank you. The person on the phone, four eight eight seven zero seven one, identify yourself, please.
Hi, Jamie, it's Bo Whalen.
How you doing?
Uh, from Parkside Village One, and I'm also in the company of Jim McHale, who lives here also. And, uh, it looks like according to Beacon, that we are out and no maintenance, no nothing is being done here. And we are told just, they're going to roll up the sidewalks and press us out. And we have no plan. There's no place for us to go, even if they tried to move us to other units for temporary. There's not enough units. We have, there's, there's no help. We cannot lose senior housing in this town. This town was built by seniors. The seniors before us. Why are you kicking us in the teeth? Because Beacon is, and you've allowed Beacon to come in here. Can you answer that?
Sure can.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Bo. Uh, as far as allowing, uh, to your point, Beacon to come in, that was a, the housing authority, the town did not engage this company or any company. That was the housing authority who was going through a development plan. And even throughout this process, I think it's important to realize for, for those who, who are maybe, you know, learning about this issue now, this project in itself from when, before Beacon, when it was the housing authority working with Mayor and then even Beacon came in and when Beacon first presented what they were going to present, they have changed, uh, dramatically what this development was going to be. And then it needs, or stated, excuse me.
I don't mean to interrupt, but it was answered by one person here, the president. We quote unquote, we call him the president, Jamie Kavanaugh. He never took a vote amongst the residents. And so whether we wanted a new building, you know, a new place, he never, never talked to us about it. We had no idea and, you know, Beacon comes in and says, oh, we're going to give you this, we're going to give you that. And they've given us, pardon my French, but jack shit. All they've done is whack us around and tell us what we can do and what we can't do. And you don't tell somebody, a, a senior, that they can't go outside and sit. You, you don't do that.
Yeah.
You know, they want to put a high rise in. We cannot go outside and enjoy. We can't sit in front of our places and enjoy. We can't, we don't want children. For God's sake, we raised our children. We don't want any more kids. You know, let the grandparents visit or the grandchildren and make sure their parents take them home. Oh, that's what golden age of life is. And I don't understand why the town of Branford has given up on us. And Branford Housing, oh, that's a whole nother story. Uh, somebody's in their pocket. Uh, that's all I can say. Uh, and if Mr. McHale would like to speak, I'd love to have him speak, but maybe he's not ready yet. So, uh, so I, I will mute myself and not say another word. And if Mr. McHale wants to come on, he can, but he's been here for twenty-three years. And he is very upset by this. Uh, that's all I can tell you. If, there are a lot of people that Jamie Kavanaugh has spoken for and he has spoken the wrong words. Okay?
Okay, thank you, Bo. Okay, any other comments? All right. We've been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, pass unanimously. Thank you. Item six, to consider and if appropriate approve the shellfish bed lease agreement. This is for lease oyster grounds number five forty, uh, in our packet. This goes before the shellfish commission and they send it to us for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, seconded by Selectman Dunbar. Any discussion? I got you.
Just a quick comment. I don't think the Shellfish Commission has met in the last several months. I tried to attend a meeting. I sent them a letter to them about, well, at least five or six months ago. And I looked at the map of this particular item and all the map has are the longitudinal, latitudinal coordinates. There's no real way of seeing where this bed is, not that I was that concerned. I, I didn't think it was in Jarvis Creek, but I just want to make the comment, and this is the letter to the Shellfish Commission, that what's being done over in Jarvis Creek and Jay Medley can speak better to this than I then, than I can, is an absolute mess in terms of the shellfish, um, ecology and, and growth and, and everything else. The state has to come down and it's just another added problem to that Jarvis Creek fiasco. So I wanted to put that in while it was a relevant issue and also wonder where the shellfish is. I mean, it's zoom. I don't think it'd be that hard to get on the, uh, you know, the, the camera. And also when they do a map, why do they do it? So you have to look it up by longitudinal latitude. Why don't you just give me a copy of the map and relative bearing points as to where the, the oyster bed is?
Yeah, I, I, I believe there is a map, uh, on file that has all the shellfish beds on file with the assessors and private clerk's office.
There is.
All right. All right, all in favor, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Item seven, to consider and if appropriate abate the taxes on the property acquired by the town located at Sixteenth Summer Island Road in the amount of five hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-four cents, eight hundred, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars, thirty-four cents and seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-five cents. The Board of Selectmen previously approved two additional, uh, tax abatements. For this.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, seconded by Selectman Dunbar. Any discussion? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Cook.
Just quickly, this was, um, procured by the, um, the, the, uh, the Flood Control Ad-Hoc Committee. Is that what?
No, no, this was, uh, something that even before that, uh, this was a town, the town, uh, purchased this. Um, we had a, uh, ongoing situation down there, longstanding issue in the neighborhood. Um, and we thought it was in the town's best interest. So this went before, uh, I brought this before Board of Finance and RTM, actually a cou- couple of years ago.
For flood control?
No, not for flood, uh, well, there was a, uh, a, a small area that was disturbed. Um, but we didn't buy it for the purposes of flood control. There was, uh, we just, um, the, the property was being, uh, utilized in a way, there was, you know, concern that, um, we, we just thought it was in best interest to be in the town's hands. Uh, you know, because of its proximity, low line proximity, uh, proximity of the road, um, and for a number of reasons.
So it was public safety?
It was.
Public safety?
Go ahead.
Public safety?
Um, I don't necessarily, I wouldn't, I don't know if public safety had an issue in it.
Right. Doesn't seem like you had a real compelling reason to buy it. I mean, I just don't understand.
Yeah, you know, with the town previously owned it, quite a, a number of years ago, I don't know why the town ever sold it in the first place. Basically bought it back, I think for pretty much the same what we sold it for, uh, uh, previously. Um, you know, se- several decades ago and, uh, uh, I think it was in the neighborhood of twenty, mid twenties, twenty-six thousand, parcel.
No, it's not going to break the bank. I was just curious. Okay, thank you.
All right, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, pass unanimously. All right, reappointments, Branford Green Committee, Don Gentile, term to expire May thirty-first, two thousand, uh, twenty-four. And Patricia Sanders, term to expire May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Moved, seconded. Discussion, Mr. Cook, is your hand up from before? Okay. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Appointments, Board of Ethics, Joseph Carradino, to fill a vacancy left by Ted Als, term to expire January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
So moved.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, seconded by Selectman Dunbar. Discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Cook.
I have a comment on this. We're pretty involved with the Board of Ethics at this point. They're looking to put in a code of, uh, the, uh, conduct for public officials, which I don't think is going to happen because of time and I don't think they're really setting the world on fire in terms of their, their, um, their schedule. But I have a real concern about the Board of Ethics and I read this fellow's, I think he's a state's attorney, isn't he? His, uh, his resume, I mean, it's impeccable. But, you know, I have to ask, how many lawyers do we need on the Board of Ethics? I mean, I think we have, well, Eleanor Sterling and then this fellow coming in and I forget, well, um, Kyle Nelson, he's chairman, he's a businessman. And then we have, uh, what, uh, Phil Donaruma and then, uh, the teacher, I can't remember his name, Peter Stolzmann. So I, I mean, I don't know. I think, you know, and I said this at the meeting and I just want to go on record and say, not that you're going to, you know, turn this guy down because he has very good credentials, but I think a Board of Ethics should be made of a, a wider, you know, assortment of people, including clergy, including just, I won't say regular citizens because they're into regular citizens, but you know, you start packing on politicians and lawyers and that, and they're going to give you a skewed position every time. You know, not that our clergy, I mean, I know a couple of them in town, they might as well be politicians, but the point is we don't need to get into that. No, I just think you have to be very selective who you put on the Board of Ethics. I can think of a handful of old timers, most of which are not around anymore, that would be perfect because they were such straight shooting people, you know, both men and women. And, um, I think that's who we need on the board. We don't need to pack it with people with credentials and everything else. Just good people that know what's ethical and what's not. If you want to throw one lawyer on there just to give a little legal guidance, that's fine. But, um, you know, I made a big presentation one night about the ethical environment that goes on in this town. And, you know, you should be really, well, you wouldn't be surprised because, you know, I mean, for example, when you see behavior like this, okay? I mean, what does that tell you in terms of, you know, the ethical behavior in this town? Excuse me while I get this up there. You know, and then you can remember this one. You know, I mean, this was our former first selectman. You know, you like to be doing your property sales or your taxes with him? This is the kind of unethical behavior that goes on. And this is just the tip of the iceberg. So I think we've got to be very careful on who we select for our Board of Ethics. That it's a critical position and it also needs to be widened to include behavior like this and like this. That's an RTM member. That's Alice Lambert in the, uh, in the blue, speaking to me. So I mean, that's what we're dealing with.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Abstentions? I am curious. Uh, Conservation and Environmental Commission, Cynthia Jasek, to fill a vacancy left by James Yakimoff, term to expire January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, seconded by Selectman Dunbar. Any further discussion? Hearing not all. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Abstention, opposed, abstentions, item carries. Green Committee, Susan Root, to replace Mary Ann Hall as Historical Society Member, term to expire May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. And Susan McNamara, to replace Susan Root as Member-at-Large, term to expire May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, seconded by Selectman Dunbar. Discussion, hearing not all. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, abstentions, item carries, honestly. Human Services Board, Laura Mijak, to fill a vacancy left by Jane Novick, term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. And Vincent Raganese, to fill a vacancy left by William Keen, term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, seconded by second, seconded by Selectman Dunbar. Discussion, hearing not all. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, pass unanimously. Greater New Haven Transit District, Judith Amorong, to fill a vacancy left by Arthur Pappas, term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, seconded by Selectman Dunbar. Uh, any discussion? Hearing not all. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, pass unanimously. Correspondence. On here, Dear Branford Board of Selectmen, under Correspondence at your next meeting, will the board please present for public discussion the following? The current status of the uncovered and untested demolition debris pile at Atlantic Wharf, referred to Board of Selectmen by the RTM. The status of the targeted removal of Town Hall corrupt signs by the Public Works Department, referred to the Board of Selectmen by the RTM. The continued hazardous flooding of Route one forty-six and Midlands Farm due to the illegal removal of an earth and berm by the Branford Land Trust. The status of an ad hoc committee to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen to discuss the future of the twenty million dollars, seventy-seven acre Tabor property currently being given away by the first selectman, referred to the Board of Selectmen by the RTM. Status of the Inlands Wetlands Department fraud investigation promised by the first selectman March of two thousand sixteen. Uh, status of the Branford Clean Energy Committee draft energy plan, sincerely Wayne Cook. Just real quickly, I think we've discussed all these items, uh, just to give a brief recap. I don't, it's necessary, I'm not in favor of present, putting them back on the agenda unless there's something new to discuss. Uh, other board member is interested, but the current status of the uncovered and untested demolition debris piles at Atlantic Wharf, um, once again, I think we discussed that quite a bit. I will just, which I shared with the RTM, uh, committee as well as the other selectmen on the board. Uh, the, uh, an email from the, uh, deep from the, I think there's an epidemiologist there who reviewed once again the documentation or the concern of the, that has been stated regarding asbestos in the brook, uh, brick. Uh, that once again, uh, was confirmed that there's no, uh, concern over that right now. Um, and they didn't have any other concerns. I think that was, uh, copied the email that was sent to, uh, Mr. Cook. Uh, the status of the targeted removal of Town Hall corrupt signs by the Public Works Department, I think we, uh, discussed that. Um, this clearly was not targeted. All signs were removed. This clearly was not targeted. All signs were removed, not just Mr. Cook's Town Hall corrupt signs. So I think there's that answer. The continued hazardous flooding of one forty six at Medlin Farm due to the illegal removal of earthen berm by the Branford Land Trust. You know, that was a long disputed cause of what's creating the one forty six flooding. I think there's a number of contributing factors that have been stated. I see you waving your hand, Mr. Cook. I'll give you an opportunity under other business, okay? So I think that's, again, a state road, and we voiced our concerns and continue to express our interests, our concerns to the state during, due to the vulnerability, not only this area but at many others. The status of the ad hoc committee to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen to discuss the future of the twenty million dollars, seventy seven acre Tabor property currently being given away by the First Selectmen, referred to by the Board of Selectmen by the RTM. I think it was actually to the First Selectmen, but even if it was to the Board, we did discuss this item. Not, as I stated, will not be creating a committee to create a plan or developing of that property or even identifying the best use unless something you feel should change and we want to, we have a need. Status of Inland Wetlands Department fraud investigation promised by the First Selectmen, I think that's been answered over, over the years. Many times. Status of the Branford Clean Energy Committee draft energy plan, I believe they continue to work on that plan. I think they've had since their presentation last year, had other presenters come in and had many discussions. I urge you to either attend a meeting or review the plan and send your comments to the committee. All right. That's all I have for correspondence. Yeah, we'll get to correspondence this quarter. Any other business? We have a couple of hands up. Go ahead, Mr. Cook.
You know, I know we're trying to do things to make the town better in EDC and whatever. But you know, Jamie, you just told five or six just bold-faced lies. I'm sorry you just did. And you know, you're such a coward about the thing. You won't even let anybody speak to it. You know, you know, I like to take those one at a time, and I'll refute every single word you said. You did nothing on those issues in the last several months. If you, all you, I don't know what happened to you, buddy, but you, all you do is lie now. And I mean, you give me an opportunity to take those on one-to-one against what you're saying, and it won't even be close when people see who's telling the truth and who isn't. I mean, you want to start with just one of those? What's the first one?
The current status, I answered that.
No, I want to hear what the first one is.
Current status of the uncovered and untested demolition.
Yeah, exactly. You know.
And clearly, clearly tested.
Is it my turn? No, it's not clearly tested. You got, here, is it my turn to talk of yours?
Yeah, I'll give you two minutes.
No, what do you mean you give me two minutes? You took at least five. What are you afraid I have, what I have to say?
Five minutes.
You know, I got to tell you something. I really didn't care who ran this town. I didn't care if you or Tom Brockett won. The more you're acting, I wish you would just go, because you're just such a dishonest person. You're unbelievable, and you and I used to be close friends. What the heck happened to you? You know what's going on over there with that Atlantic Wharf? They tested two bricks and they say it's all fine. You must have tens of thousands of bricks. And the, and the covers, the piles are still uncovered. And I'll go down the list. You did nothing about the Medlin Farm, or we'll work with the SCROG about that. You did nothing about that. Parkside, the people took it on, they were the one that did that, until you realized that, you know, this is making me look bad. I better jump in and start saying something myself. As far as the Tabor property goes, you still continue to give it away. The RTM sent that to you for an ad hoc committee to examine the use of the property. Not whether it should be developed, but the use of the property. And what do you do with the property? You give it away to all your green cult friends so that they vote for you. And you're not really fooling anybody. Where else you want to go with this thing? Want to go to the, to the Green Energy Committee? You know, for crying out loud, we were in here, what, six months ago? I can't remember when it was, and they were passing, they were trying to pass this bogus plan, well, they're putting it forth like it is the plan on the town website. That's the draft of the plan. We all agreed to that. And that's another thing they're trying to sneak by. And as far as this investigation for Costco, what you said we were going to get five years ago, we'd never seen that. Not only have we never seen it, your own running mate and the second selectman have never seen it. But still, you say it exists. Why won't you show, you know, the two primary town officials in this town, except yourself, what exists out there? Why? Because it doesn't exist, or you don't want them to see it because it's just so bogus. So I mean, how you could sit there and just lie and lie and lie as though these things have been taken care of? I mean, I really do not know what happened to you. I really don't. I mean, maybe this is what the office does to people. Maybe this is what it did to DeRoz, because he was a decent guy too. And all of a sudden, both of you turn out to be just bold-faced liars. And I'd like to say one more thing. I'd like to make presentations in the upcoming selectment meetings. They run to last about fifteen minutes each. I like to use screen share to do it, so I can show the town what I'm talking about. If you, if you're afraid to be doing that, then you're going to say no. But if you think I've got nothing to say and I'm going to put myself on the line in front of the whole community, well, then you should let me do it. Let the facts speak for themselves, and you can pick anyone you want at first. Costco, I mean, Route one forty six, I got PowerPoint for all of them. But you won't let me show them why, because it shows that you lie. I mean, I really don't know what more to say to you. I mean, not only do you lie, but you prevent people from speaking to refute those lies. I mean, really, what country did we move into? Can you tell me that?
Okay, thank you.
No, there's no.
Selectwoman Higgins, you had a comment?
I just wanted to say that we have reviewed all of this.
Glad, not reviewed.
Excuse me, excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir, Wayne. I listened very carefully. I didn't interrupt you, and I would ask you to do the same, please. So the selectmen and woman, and this, all, all of these specifics have been brought us, we spent a lot of time listening to all the concerns, the complaints, the upsetment. And it's time to move forward. We've, we've heard it. There's nothing new being added to, to the correspondence that we should be at this point addressing.
See, this is the point, excuse me.
Did I ask you not to interrupt me?
I didn't think you would, I thought you.
Okay, please, please. So, and as far as your personal views about me, Jamie, anybody else, Tom Brockett, it doesn't matter. That's personal, has nothing to do with the selectmen's meeting. It has nothing to do. You have every right to feel the way you feel, but don't use our forum for your agenda. It's not right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Petrowski has a hand up.
Yes, thank you. I was just curious to, where, how come there's not a continuation or anything from the Parkside petition this week? Last week, I thought you, you did a good, or excuse me, the last meeting, I think you did a good job with the questions, and unfortunately, like I said to you last week, none of them got answered. Everything was a roundabout answer. You couldn't get a direct answer out of her. And, you know, and it's, and to address what Selectwoman Higgins was saying, you might have looked into it, but there's, there's been no result of anything. And that's where the frustration is starting to come in. You know, this, the Parkside thing's been going on for over six, six years, but the petition, you know, went in. Okay, you talked to Tacey, asked a bunch of questions that you never got an answer to. And, I mean, where are we at with the current status? I mean, the term is up in April. I mean, it's to the point where if you want another petition from the citizens to remove her, I have no problem doing it, and we'll have it in the next meeting. I mean, I just figured after what you went through with Doug Dennis and the damage he caused after you let him stay on, after his term was up before he removed him, maybe you would have learned from that of how much damage he caused to this town. And, and what we're going through is because he stayed on after his term and did all what he, what he did. Tacey is not qualified to be on that board. She couldn't answer a question. You asked her a simple question about who was living there, what the efficiency rates are. She didn't have any answers. She couldn't answer. Everything that she answered to was written by Yale Law. We all know that. And this whole thing started with that land swap, which was a bad idea from the beginning on the town's part. Even Representative Black said that the Housing Authority screwed you guys over on that deal. So I mean, right there is dishonesty. The place has been in fire code violation for over a year. It had somebody get stuck on the chairlift. And nobody cares. I mean, this is, you know, this is the woman that's supposed to be helping our seniors, helping the community down there. And ultimately, and if you look at the last meeting, which was after your meeting, what a, what a show that was. She kept trying to adjourn every time she didn't like what she heard. She had, she lied in it. She said Anna Skovitch was emailing her when that came out at the end that that was false. I mean, this is what you have down there. The term is up. And I hope you guys, like you, like Selectwoman Higgins, since you've been discussing it, what are you going to do? Are you going to reward this individual with another five years after all the damage she's caused down there? Or you're going to say, hey, your term's up, we're parting ways, you're not capable of being on this board? I mean, and that's pretty much where we're at. And, and one last thing, you know, these people that we're trying to fight against are, is an all-star team. You have Attorney Hollister, who's probably the best at what he does, you got Yale Law involved. And what do we combat it with? Parking ticket lawyers. You could, we should have hired the, the second best or the woman from Westport that beat Hollister in land use several times, but, I mean, why hire her? Let's use whoever we use and just continue to lose and lose and lose. And I wish, hopefully, Alex Bluzi's still on the call, because ultimately, I said this to you last time, and I don't think it registered with anybody or the RTM. Now, what are you going to do about the ball field park? That property is gone. It's our own property that we can no longer use, got seized by this project. Never mind the green cult people you're going to have to deal with about the deforestation and the blasting of the stone on one forty six. Never mind the parents that you're going to have that are going to be riled up that they can't get anywhere to get to the fields. I mean, if you want to deal with the soccer moms and all the Little League moms, that's on you. I, I, I say a prayer for you. But that's, you know, there's a lot of moving parts here that, you know, you guys need to address, and unfortunately, the decision comes down where what are you going to do? And I believe you should do something because the term's up in nine days. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Petrowski. Just to clear, respond to a couple of things that were said. Yeah, we did receive the, the Board, or I, I did receive, and I believe the Board received, which I did forward some comments. These just came in from the Chairman of the Housing Authority. That was sent around. To be honest, I got it the other day, haven't reviewed it. There was no need to continue on to have, put on the agenda for tonight if there was going to be no new discussion regarding. Just, I want to clarify for the public in terms of your comments regarding, because I know you made them previously as well, regarding the the land exchange swap as far as the loss of parking. That is, is not the result, that will not be the result of this change. Actually, it was a the line actually was putting the current ball field all on town property, because pre, and it hasn't been executed yet. But the, the ball field, a significant part of the field was on the Housing Authority property. The majority, the parking lot area, as well as the access road going in, is still town property. There was a parcel, a line delineation that was changed, I believe, on the eastern, western side of the Housing Authority property. All right. Is there any other members that would like to speak? Any other people from the public?
I'd like to speak, please, to the third selectman. You know, he says this every meeting, that, you know, you've heard everything, you've done everything. Point is, you've neither heard everything and you've done nothing. You've done absolutely nothing. You haven't answered one single question these citizens have been asking on these variety of issues all year long. Since you've been here, third selectman, you have answered nothing. You know, your job is just not to listen and sit there silent. Your job is to address the issues that the people bring to you with petitioning of their government. And, and none of you have done that. And I'll even conclude the second selectman on that. You just sit there and just listen. You know, the truth of the matter is, I think we're getting a little bit tired of this. You know, I mean, we bring legitimate concerns. It's costing this town tens of millions of dollars, and all of you just sit there. I mean, what are you doing there? Why don't we just go to a town council or a town manager? This is the most pathetic government between you three selectmen and our pathetic RTM we could possibly invent. It's awful. You don't talk to the issues. If you gave me fifteen minutes, you gave me fifteen minutes to put up one of my PowerPoints, I guarantee I would convince every person, every fair-minded person in this town, how corrupt this, 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 this government is. Because I deal with facts. I don't deal with lies, and I don't deal with censoring people. You should, all of you, all of you, Board of Selectmen and the RTM and Lord knows the Board of Finance.
Good comments. Okay. I agree with Selectwoman Higgins and her comments. I don't think this is the forum. We've heard these issues, as I stated many times, if there's something that the Board, not myself, if the Board feels that warrants further discussion or action by this body, then we would welcome that. But, you know, I think the Board or individuals have responded on a number of these issues. And, you know, whether, whether that satisfies certain individuals, that's, you know, not something that we control, but I think this Board has, has responded to the concerns heard. All right.
Todd still have his hand up?
Yes, I, Mr. Petrowski, one more comment, please.
No, thank you. And I, and I understand the clarification about the, the land swap. That's really not what I was talking about. I mean, that, that was fine until Beacon got involved, and all of a sudden, it became a problem. Prior to Beacon, it was never an issue of using each other's land. But that's a material what I'm talking about. We're not, I'm not talking about any loss of land there. I'm talking about the parking lot. And I've talked to Alex Bluzi personally about it, and he says we need that parking lot. So that's what I'm talking about when I say the parking lot. An actual sliding field parking lot has to be clear at all times, unless it changed. I said this to you last time. Sean Heffernan, who was the Fire Marshal, said, for safety reasons, because of how high the retaining wall is going to be in the forty-five foot structure in a residential neighborhood, that that whole parking area has to remain empty at all times. That's what I refer to as the loss of the parking. But the question is, to save us all some time, did the three of you, and I don't know if you could say this publicly, did the three of you discuss any reappointment for any Housing Authority members?
That has not come before the Board at this, yeah.
Anything we discuss, Todd, has to be done in public.
That'll be done.
Well, I mean, the term, the term is up in nine days. So, I mean, I don't know, and I know there was, ladies and gentlemen, that sent their resumes to you to be part of that Board. So I mean, the first term expires, which it says April of twenty twenty one, which is what we're in. I mean, if you, if need be, we could do a citizen's petition with the removal of Tacey Low and Kate Collins. And if that's what we need to do to get this jump started, then I have no problem doing it, having that turned into you by your next meeting. But I don't want to have to go through this whole thing again and waste time again after this has been beat up for six years. I mean, you, you know, you guys heard, I think, enough evidence of just failure with fire code and failure to help the seniors. You heard the Bo Whalen prior. I mean, we got to do something here. I mean, just don't make the same mistake twice that you did with Doug. Thank you.
I, I have a comment. I hate to hold this up any longer than it is, but you know, we, we sit here, meeting after meeting, and, and month after month, and some, some year after year, and we don't get a lot of, a lot of closure. You know, there seems to be this misunderstanding that the Board of Selectmen can change all, make everything better. There's some things that are not within our power. They're just not. And that goes sometimes, you know, yeah, we make appointments, but, but often those names are presented by, you know, the DTC, the RTC, and, and other concerned citizens that want people to go in there. And they're filtered through whatever system we have in place right now, which often it goes maybe to the selectmen's office, or they send them to the Board of Selectmen, we get names, but, you know, certainly, these names for appointments don't just come out of a hat. of a hat. Um, the other thing that gets to be a little bit disturbing is the, the constant comments of the Board of Selectmen not doing anything. Um, you know, uh, there's many things that have been listed by others, and they know this, um, that, that they know that, that we can't do anything about because it's not within our preview to do it. Um, but, but I, I would give this for, for consideration and not a decision tonight, just people to think about, and maybe we can discuss it at the next selectman meeting. But, but maybe there's a way to take one subject matter at a time and, and, and put it to rest. Um, but put the rest with, here it is, this is what we have. But just because we can't solve it, doesn't mean we're not doing anything. Um, you know, two of us meet twice a month. Um, we get the information that we get and we have to deal with, 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 with that and, and make decisions based on sometimes limited information. But we often spend many, many hours of our own time looking in the subject matter that's presented to us. Um, and we're not experts. I'm not an expert. I, I never claimed to be. And I'm not perfect. I don't claim to make all the right, the, the right decisions all the time. That's not because I don't want to. It's just because I'm human. But, but to constantly attack the board as we don't do anything, I, I think it's just nonsense. Um, but, but at some point in time, if the other board members are up to it, maybe we can take subject matter one at a time. And, and if you want to do it in front of the public, that's fine. Um, I, I have no problem with it and, and put it to rest. But I, but I think the constant talking about things and arguing about the, the same subject matter and the same evidence every single selectman meeting i- is not productive to all the citizens in the town. But, but I also don't think it's productive that we don't close out matters. So, I'm not sure how to do that. Uh, I'll, I'll be looking to the other board members maybe to, to work with me. Um, you know, obviously, the first selectman has to put it on, on his plate to be able to, uh, to have this work. But, you know, I, I, I just think it's wrong to think that you can just constantly tell people that we don't do anything because it's, it's not true. And, and people that know me in the town know that that's not how I operate. Yeah, I'm not going to give you the answers you want all the time. Um, and this board's not going to give you the answers you want all the time. But, but it's not because of malice or anything else. Sometimes it's just the, the subject matter and, and the way it is. Um, so I've said enough for tonight, but, but, you know, I think this board does, does good work. I think the RTM does good work. I think all the volunteers in this town do good work. Can we do better? Yes, we can all do better. But, but I think sometimes, you know, some people just think that, that we're something we're not, and I don't think that's fair. Thank you, Mr. Selectman.
All right, thank you, Selectman Dunbar.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Second, Miss Selectman Dunbar. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.